Good afternoon, saints. Welcome to Betty's 2:00 PM Zoom Room Study Session. Yes, a late afternoon virtual Bible study brought to you by Way of Healing Hands Ministry as a part of the Open Book Series. I'm Pastor Stevens, the facilitator of this study session, inviting you to open your hearts and your minds as I open the book. Let's get at it. How you guys doing? Good to see y'all today. Everybody alright? Open your mouths up and talk to me. Open the mics up and talk to me. How y'all doing?
I'm fine.
That's good, that's good. I am certainly excited about Ms. Dot being here at 2:00. That thing got my heart so happy. 2:00, I look up there, she said, "Lord, have mercy." She's an old time student.
Old time, Lord.
Anybody heard from Betty?
Not today.
Not today? Okay, you know what I want to do before we launch into our Chapter 3 of the Second Epistle? Let me hear, I want to hear something from you guys and see if I've been any help to you in basically understanding, first of all, what Peter is saying about false teachers, and then what are some of your own thoughts around the notion of false teachers? Are you learning something and have been helpful there? And the reason I want to pause to do this before we move forward into the next chapter is because we are living in that time where there's all, what I tend to say is that proliferation, a whole lot of people doing a whole lot of stuff, saying a whole lot of things, and the church is kind of just sitting there almost like an innocent lamb, okay? And everybody's got their view, everybody's got their opinion. So, we've been looking carefully at how Peter handled that diaspora crown. He told them to pay close attention to the notion of Jesus Christ and His teaching and what the apostles have taught regarding Jesus. So I'm just curious, what are some of your thoughts? What have you been thinking about as we've been going through this section? Chapter 2, we started at verse 1, and we've been working through now we're getting ready to move forward. So where you at? Anybody want to share with me a little bit?
Well, yeah. And I've been listening to you and studying along. This is another preacher preaching. Like I said, I sit back and listen to a lot of them. They're not sticking to what the words are actually saying. They put things on the word that they want it to be. You had to be careful, because Jesus said no time coming. Even they let you be fooled about what they're saying. They make it sound so good. But as you know, standing for yourself, you follow the things they're saying.
Right, right, I can hear that.
Since I've been doing that, you, I've stood behind you, stood with you and behind you some time, and I can see some of the things that they're doing today. Like Jesus said, they would come in and dress the sheep clothes. It sounded good, but when you read for yourself, then you find out something different.
What you mean when you're reading for yourself and saying, what you talking about? You trying to say something, ain't you, boy?
Like this about Jesus coming back.
Yeah.
He didn't say when it would come. He didn't even know when he said himself, he don't know when it would come.
Right, right.
If he didn't know when it would come, then he would have to tell the public when it would come back. So that way he told the watching, watch, watch person, and look.
Right.
Be ready when it comes. So, so 14, he came and come and gone without the army.
Right, I got you, I got you. Okay, you hold tight now, I won't miss your voice. We want to have as much voice as we can, because you going out. But I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate that too, because oftentimes, you know, like when you can, you've got a movement of believers that are actually teaching, that the rapture has already come. And you've got people now that are teaching that there is no second coming, you know, that kind of thing. The basic tenets of our faith as Christians is challenged in many, many ways subtly and quietly, and if we're not paying closer attention, we'll miss all of that, you know? And so it behooves us to do what you're saying. When you read for yourself, now what you're reading, I love this when Paul went into Thessalonica and Berea in that area. He preached, and by day and at night, the members of the, that heard him would look through the scriptures, search the scriptures, and find him to be true. We've got a lot of people that don't read for themselves, and so you can tell them anything. You can just say anything. The preacher who's new now on the scene telling people that we need to be more concerned about sin and going to hell, we need to understand sin. And I'm like, well, you got to read carefully, because Jesus dealt with sin. Sin ain't the issue. And so when you say something like, "Nobody's going to hell because of sin," people go, "What you mean?" Well, they're not. You're going to hell because you ignored God's resolution to sin, which was Christ, His relationship. He took care of sin in Calvary. So our focus shouldn't be on sin. Our focus should be on relationship with Jesus and how to live in that relationship so that we learn principles that keep us clear of the penalties of our sins. Because as long as we live, we're going to have some sinful moments. We're going to do sin, it's going to happen. It's our sinful nature. But we don't have to live in accordance to our sin and live according to our passions, and we understand how to live because He teaches us how to live. But you got to read that and know that. So you get people going around, if you in sin, they judging you, and they don't understand that that's sin, judging, okay? So it gets kind of crazy. So reading for yourself, but having a pastor, having someone who is sent to teach with the gift of teaching to walk you through, because you can't, you just can't read and be saved. You got to hear salvation. Faith comes by hearing, not by reading, okay? And we have to really be careful with that. You can research, you can study, but faith comes as a result of hearing the proclaimed truths of God. And how can they hear? A preacher, okay? And if he is not sent, then you ain't go hear truth. What you go hear? You go hear His truth and whatever else He might be wanting you to hear.
His story.
His little story. Where after he have it, what he get out of it? That's funny. Okay. What about you, Ms. Dot? What you got? What you feeling after that?
I don't know why you asking me, you know I don't. What I remember is that you was teaching that any teaching that is different from the Bible is false teaching, and that the things that, a lot of things that you taught us, like Dick said, that we don't hear them in church from other pastors. And I've learned a lot of how to do better, you know, like treat people and to not be judgmental, because I understand more how you taught it than what I did in church, you know?
I hear you, I hear you. Yeah, the idea of the false teacher, be careful with that. The false teacher's about Jesus, not about the Bible. The false teacher, if anything that deviates from what Jesus taught, okay, is false teaching, not from the Bible, because there are a lot of things in the Bible, like the Old Testament text in the Bible, that are no longer applicable because they've been fulfilled in Jesus Christ. So we got to follow Him, you know what I'm saying? We got to follow Jesus. So anybody that's deviating or moving away from Jesus, there you going to find a false teacher.
That's false.
There you go, there you go, very good. But everything else is cool, dead on target, dead on target. Deborah, are you there?
Excuse me?
Deborah?
Oh.
Are you there? I know she's not been feeling well, but she been here in distance, so she's probably... Okay, well, anyway, that gives us a sense of, give me a sense of what you guys, a little bit of tempo about what you're dealing with. Now, the next chapter, when we go into Chapter 3, we're going to go to another level, okay? Let me read a few of the verses. We'll read a few of them. "This is now, beloved, the second letter that I'm writing to you. And then I am trying to arouse your sincere intention by reminding you that you should remember the words spoken in the past by the holy prophets and the commandment of the Lord and Savior spoken through your apostles." Okay, let's get that piece down, that piece down real good. Verse 1 and 2. Okay, now, he opens up Chapter 3. The subject is the promise of the Lord's coming. Here's what's going on. Jesus has not come back yet, okay? Peter and Paul and Titus and Timothy, in their particular stages of apostolic careers, talked about the coming of Jesus Christ. All of the apostles, all of the apostles after Jesus went back to live with the Father, when they taught, that was the basis of the Christian principle teaching, that Christ was coming back soon, okay? This same Christ was coming back. Well, we're well into the first century church, the first hundred years. He has not come back. And so the issue then becomes whether or not the apostles were being honest? Were they just giving us myths, making up stories? Now, you remember back in Chapter, back early in Chapter 2, the confession, the apostolic confession about the Mount of Transfiguration? When Peter, James, and John saw the Christ that they had been following transformed into His carnate state, okay? Now, when we read it, He was bright, He was wider than Moses and Elijah. What we're looking at is Him in His state before He became man. He went to that state, and they saw it. And it was, Jesus, Jesus was caught, went to the top of the mountain, and if you read the text, it was for them to see. He took them up there, and before them, He did this. He was transformed, God transformed them, so they could see it. And they wanted to do, Peter wanted to build three tavernacles, you know, memorialize it. No, 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 no. God comes in a form of a cloud and speaks to them and identifies Jesus as His Son, whom He pleased, and the instruction is to follow Him, to hear Him, okay? And so Peter jumps up in the midst of this conversation, and he says to them just what Jesus told them. He said, "Don't y'all say nothing yet, but after I've been raised from the dead, after I've been, after the resurrection, then you tell it." Well, Peter jumped into Chapter 2, and he says, "No, no, 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 these are not myths. This really happened." So he gives us what we call the eyewitness account, and that becomes the basis of his argument against these false teachers, that this Christ, this Christ of which we talk about was the Son of God. He did come, He was killed, and He did go back to the Father, and He is coming back. We believe that. Now, that's their experience. And what we read when we read that, we have to understand that that's our commitment. That's why we do what we do. Now, what the church has done is says, "We do what we do because we want to go to heaven, and we don't want to go to hell." That's not the gospel message. The gospel message is so that we can receive Him when He returns. We do what we do. Okay, now, the next stages of that is He takes us back with the Father, and we live eternally with Him, with the Father, okay? With Him and the Father. That's the going to heaven part that everybody got, right? So see, the old preacher standing in the pulpit got the heaven piece, but didn't get the, this front end here, okay? Jesus is coming back to judge, but He's not going to judge you because of sin. He's going to judge you because of relationship with Jesus. If you're not in relationship with Jesus, then you don't go back. If you're in relationship, then we shall go back in the harvest, okay? Church has got people thinking that the judgment is about sin. The issue of sin was resolved at Calvary. Did you hear it? It is finished. I died for your sins, I've atoned for your sins, you've been forgiven of your sins. Now, a new way to live on the backside of the Christ is the way I taught you to live. And that's what, that's what we're dealing with as apostolic believers, okay? While we're waiting on Jesus, how much like Him are we? Because when He comes back, He's looking for us to look like Him. They wanted to go with Him, you remember, they wanted to go with Him, and Jesus said, "No, you stay here, and I'm going to prepare a place for you, and when I come back, I'll know you by your love." So you got to do, you got to do this thing that I have done in my name, in my way, and then I'll know who you are. That's the judgment on the day of the Lord. Are you like me? That's important. We got a heaven thing going on, and that's very difficult, because the heaven is a prepared place for a prepared people. You ain't got to worry about heaven. What you got to worry about is meeting Jesus on the day of the Lord. Now, Paul says that we are already judged in Christ Jesus. Peter's saying the same thing, basically, that your salvation is yours based on how you relate to Jesus, okay? So this is the subject matter that he's dealing with. I just want to give you a little background so you can understand why Peter is talking about the promise of the Lord's coming, because the false teacher was saying that that's a lie, that ain't going to happen, very much like some teachers today actually want to know the truth. Okay, this is now beloved.
I got a question right quick.
All right.
Why don't you put your line there, like the standard Old Testament? Let the preacher know the Old Testament.
Yeah, oh, boy. Well, I won't presume to know the full answer, but from my own experiences, I asked a preacher, I was going to that church on a pretty, you know, I kind of liked him, and I liked the people, I knew many of them, so I was going to that church. And after service one Sunday, I, can I ask you a question? Why is it that I've been coming here, and I've not heard you preach about Jesus? You know, you're always in the Old Testament, never hear any preaching about Jesus. And his answer to me was classic. He said, "The people need to know about God. They need to know about God. That's what's wrong with the church. They ain't got no respect, no reverence for God." And I was like, wow, wow, okay, and it's like, and now, he didn't understand that you can't talk about God without Jesus. He is the only way we know God. But so I would argue, it's theology, it's the way they think. They separate the Father and the Son, although they say that they're together, they separate them, and they take Christ as a lesser being, and they focus on God, okay? They believe in Christ. He was raised from the dead, forgave them for their sins, but that's it, okay? Now, it's all about God. They don't understand the agency of the Son, that God sent the Son so that we can be close to Him through the Son. And so all that Jesus is teaching, we're going to get into that in a minute too, all that Jesus is teaching is so that we can be close to the Son, that we can be, I mean, be one with the Father. If you seen me, you seen the Father. There's no way to the Father but by me. Jesus taught that. But for some reason, modern preachers, Jesus holds you accountable for some of the most interesting things. I was sitting in a preacher's conference, and they were talking, the discussion was love and forgiveness. And all these preachers were saying things that were just freaking me out. I mean, seasoned preacher, been preaching for years, bishops. Well, love is like, I mean, forgiveness is like this. You got to forgive, sometimes you got to forgive in stages, you know, and because you got to work on it, you got to work on it, and they were just going on, and I was just sitting there, and I'm going like, I went, hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up. According to the New Testament, we forgive because we were forgiven. That's not a work on thing, that's a must do thing. And if you're unable to forgive, it's because you've not been transformed, you've not been regenerated yourself. You know, you're not considered what God has forgiven you through Christ Jesus, what He's forgiven you for. And only those who are forgiven can practice forgiveness. Boo them away. What are you saying? I'm saying if you have not forgiven, if you have not forgiven sister God, you're not forgiven by the Father. That's the New Testament. So see, oftentimes, Clarence, their preoccupation with the prophets leaves them blind to what Jesus taught. And so they end up making Christianity about Noah, Moses, Jeremiah, Isaiah, Jacob, all them people. They don't see the glory of God in Jesus Christ like they saw the glory of God in the prophets. You see what I'm saying? We're going to talk about that in a minute. So the issue is just bad theology. Some preachers just don't read nothing but the Old Testament. They don't read about Jesus, because Jesus will hold you accountable. You understand what I'm saying? You can't live any kind of way, and instead of preach Jesus. I just dealt with the preacher regarding that, you know? Just judgmental, Ms. Dot, just judgmental. But then he was preaching from John, and Jesus said, "If I speak to you, and you hear me and don't believe, I won't judge you," okay? Because I didn't come into the world to judge, to condemn the world. I came into the world that the world through me might be saved. But my word on the day of the Lord will judge you." And so this preacher was struggling with that, because he just judges everybody. That's not our job to stand in the pulpit and judge people. You see why preaching Jesus would be difficult? Because we want to stand in the pulpit and tell people what they need to do, instead of talking to them about Jesus. I didn't mean to go on and on about that, but that's a pet peeve of mine, but that's somewhat of something for you to have, to think about, Clarence. There are a lot of reasons.
I understand where you're coming from. I just wonder why they don't like to go into the temple and talk about those things. And everything was fulfilled in Christ, and Christ became fulfilled, the love was fulfilled in Him.
Right? Then so we should be focused on Him now, right?
Right.
Did you ask a question? Have you asked a question?
They didn't, they didn't. They ain't preaching, you can't ask a question to preach.
I mean, wait, you know, okay, you trying to be smart. Hey, look, now, he know he ain't asking nothing, that why he trying to do that? He gonna ask me, but he ain't gonna ask nobody else.
I understand it though.
I bet you do. Don't think about you been doing all that reading for yourself stuff, ain't it, boy? Oh, praise the Lord. I won't leave you alone now, I'm going, I ain't going to bother you.
I don't want to lose faith about you and when the doctrine come to.
There you go. Now, everywhere in the doctrine, now, I hear you. Okay, let's look, now, he says, he uses the word beloved, that's the agape toy, dear friends, those who love with the love of Christ, the love of God, the agape toy, the beloveds. So he's making it very clear, he's talking to the community. There are things that he's going to say that only those who are in the community, only those who believe as he believes, only those who love the Christ the way he loves the Christ can understand. And that's one thing we need to get. We get in the church, and we started talking about Jesus and the scriptures, and we start treating everybody like they believed it. Everybody don't believe in that. Scriptures ain't for everyone. There are people who look at you and go, "That's stupid." So listen to what he's saying. He's specifically talking to those who are collectively in the same mindset that he's in. He's mentioned a second, he said, "This is the second letter I'm writing to you." Now, we can clearly assume that he's referring to the first letter that he wrote, okay? Now, I wouldn't get into an argument with anybody about exactly what he meant, but because we have the First Epistle, we can make that, we can make that assumption, and he's referencing that letter, okay? He says his intent was to arouse sincere intention, okay? These are the agape toy. They've been run out, right? And he's trying to make sure that they stay real focused on how important, important it is to be Christian, to live the Christian principles, because you are among haters. You are among people that don't feel what you feel. So you have to make sure you live out the faith that you were taught. Now, listen to why he says this. He says, "We were trying to arouse you by reminding you," okay? "Reminding you that you should remember the words spoken in the past by the holy prophets." The holy prophets, he's talking about the Old Testament writers, that's what we call the Old Testament writer. Remember the words they've spoken, and, and, look where he uses the word commandment of the Lord. He uses the commandment of the Lord and the Savior spoken through the apostles. You would think he would have said the commandments spoken by the prophets, but he didn't. He said, "The commandments spoken through, throughout, spoke, the commandment of the Lord and Savior spoken through your apostles." So he's putting the apostles on the same plane as the holy prophets of the ancient days. Saying, "Remember what the prophets said, and remember the commandment of our Lord Jesus, our Savior, spoken through who? The apostles." That's really important. Now, this is, Jesus is not here. He's saying, "The only way we know what Jesus taught is what He spoke through the apostles." That becomes very important. Now, you see what a problem we get into, Ms. Dot, when Shirley May start preaching, and she start calling herself apostle. John Henry, he been drunk all his life, and got in that car accident, and he got out, and had nothing but a little bubble on his head, and now he done started preaching, and he's an apostle. See how we do? We have Apostle Jenny Mae Jones, and Apostle Herman, Herman, Herman McDonald. We just name ourselves, because we use that as a title. But when we're reading the New Testament, the apostolic tradition is sacred. What Jesus taught His apostles, when He taught His apostles, what they taught their disciples, and what their disciples taught their disciples, that's the tradition that we're in. So what we know about the ministry of Jesus, we didn't witness it. We ain't seen no water turn, no wine, but I believe it. You know why I believe it? Because John said it. The Apostle John said it, and I believe it. I'm stupid like that. I just believe it because John said it, he seen it. I believe it. That's how our faith moves. And so Peter's trying to remind them that we're not, we're not, we're not, we're buying, we're buying into the testimony of what the prophets said and what the apostles said, Jesus said about what the prophets said. See, that's how our faith works. Jesus fulfilled the prophets, and now what Jesus had to say, the Father told Him to say to the apostles, and the apostles said to those who follow us. So I hear people all the time, "I don't know about that Apostle Paul." What you don't know? He's an apostle of the Lord. Two thirds of the New Testament is written by this man. So you saying two thirds of the New Testament, you don't know about it? Oh, give me a break. That's scary. That's where your false teachers come in at. Paul will say one thing, and then you turn around and say another. You don't understand Paul. Don't put your lack of understanding the writer, making it be of the writer's problem, you don't understand him. Study! You got 13 books that he wrote, and you will find him consistent in every book that he wrote, but he wrote to different people at different times and different situations under different conditions. And you got to read it in context to understand. Yes, he told women to cover their heads when they're in worship, because all the women were Jewish, and they all wore, and got no help. These were Gentile women who were not, who looked different from the rest. He wanted them to look just like the rest of the church's look, so that men would see the unity in the body of Christ. This is the truth. But you see, the apostles, we got to hold them sacred. So he's pointing that out. He's reminding them that you should remember the words of the holy prophets, but you should all, look what he said, but you should remember the commandment of the Lord and Savior spoken through your apostles. So the sense of commandment that was given to the law during the prophetic period is now shifted to the apostolic period. So what the apostles teach us is our commandment from Jesus. Now, that's powerful. So when Jesus says, "Turn the other cheek," you don't get to say, "I don't know about that turning the other cheek." You just told, you just said, "What you just said was, you're not going to do what Jesus said, you ain't clear on that, and you okay God told me to say that." You ain't going to try to get no understanding. I ain't going to stand there and nobody slap me, just slap me from one side of the door, like, I ain't no fool. God give you common, see, look at, sit down somewhere. Sit down somewhere and learn. That's not what Jesus is saying, letting somebody slap you to death. He's saying that you can't... He's saying that you can't have and be a follower, you can't have an aggressive attitude towards your enemy. That's what he's saying. You can't get, I, I tell you what, no, 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 you can't do that and follow Jesus. See? Y'all, y'all let that silly woman with that Smith and Wesson, what her name, uh, uh, what her name, Tyler Perry, love, what that woman that he be pretending to be? Talking, you know, when she get mad, she got her Smith and Wesson, you know? Yeah, Muddy, y'all gonna let Muddy send you straight to hell? Cause Muddy'll tell you in a minute, she, she got her word. No, 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 no. We can't be aggressive towards our enemies. It doesn't make sense, they hung Jesus on the cross, he swung nail punch. He ain't elbow nobody. He ain't cuss nobody out, he didn't threaten to go get his, 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 his spear, he didn't threaten to go get his bow and arrow. His sword. And now we sit loving Jesus with a pistol in our glove compartment threatening folk. See? The apostle apostolic teachings, Jesus, Peter assigns the word commandment. And he's trying to say to them, treat what the apostles are saying like you treated the prophetic commandments of God, the law. It's that deep. Now, that's not to say they obeyed the law or the, or the prophets, but that was the whole point. That's why Jesus came, cause they didn't obey. So this is the new commandment, which is that found in Jesus Christ, okay? Now, I can't, I can't, I can't, uh, uh, insist on that anymore, that you really understand. That at this point in our study, the, the significant of apostolic teachings, okay? Apostolicity, that's not a word you gotta learn, but the, the idea of embracing the teachings of the apostle. Of the, the teaching of the apostles as a commandment from Jesus Christ himself, okay? So all of the apost- apostolic teachings are coming straight, they're sourced in God, now notice that. If the, if the prophetic words, words uttered by the prophets, and the words uttered by the apostles are on the same plane, where did they get those words from? God. The apostles, God, I mean, the, of the prophets, God spoke directly to them. Go and tell my people, and they went and told people. In the apostolic tradition, uh, God sends his son to tell the apostles. When Jesus came, what did he do? He chose twelve apostles, why did he choose twelve apostles? For this very reason. So that when he's going back to the Father, these twelve men can be responsible for advancing and constructing the new church. Am I making sense? Am I making sense? Say something, am I ma- okay, let me know, thumbs up, okay, let me know, Dot, am I making sense to you, baby? All right, let me know, so, don't try to be, no, I mean, uh. Verse three. Now, remember now, he's reminding them, okay, uh, that they should remember the words. So now he's getting ready to start dealing with some of the word they should remember. First of all, you must understand this, that in the last days, scoffers will come. Scoffers, scoffing and indulging their own lust. And saying, where is the promise of his coming? Okay, there it is, there's the whole thing right there now, the scoffers of chapter three. Get this, Ms. Dot, are the same as the false teachers of chapter two. Remember in chapter two, he says, he says, the same will, uh, will arise among you? In chapter two, one? He says, uh, uh, during the, during the prophetic age, false, false prophets arose among them. In the same way, in this day, false teachers will rise among you. These false teachers, he goes on to describe them in chapter two, now in chapter three, he calls them scoffers. So the scoffers of chapter two of three are the false teachers of chapter one. And, and years gone by, as I taught the lesson, taught this lesson, I neglected to make that distinction. And I noticed, I, I said, oh my goodness, I'm clear on that, and I know from just my memory, I wasn't very clear on that, uh, in days gone by. So, trust me when I tell you, I'm hearing myself. Scoffers is an expression of scorn, um, contempt, mockery. Okay, so when he calls them scoffers, he's talking about the way they treat Christianity. The way they treat the teachings of Jesus Christ. They mock them, they scorn them, um, they hold them, they hold the teachers in contempt. Yeah, you said Jesus was coming back, where? Where, where, I don't see no Jesus, where? Somebody lying up in here, scoffers. Yeah, y'all said he was coming back, when? It, it's near, look, we almost a hundred years ago, y'all said that he ain't back yet. I've heard people say that even today. Yeah, my, my grandmother, my grandmother, uh, raised me when she, she was all in the holding this church, talking about, uh, Jesus coming back. And she dead and gone, he ain't back yet. That's called scoffing, mocking. You getting a sense of this, Clarence, you getting a sense of this? And see, remember what he said, now, when he talked in chapter two, when he talked about the teachers, they quietly bring in teachings that are real, that are real destructive. See, that kind of talk, when you get around people who talking like that. I had a, was a part of my ministry, and, um, he, um, stayed, no, I'm basically raising him in the church, I met him when he was a child. And as he became an adult, he became interested in Middle Eastern religions. And began to, you know, burn the incense and the oils and the incantations and things like that, and, and, uh, um. He makes statements sometimes about Christianity, um, that are, uh, that are scoffing statements without realizing that's what he's doing. You know, but I'm aware, cause I, I stay in touch with him, I'm, I'm aware that he's found another, uh, another expression of religion. You know, but he does not know the Christ. And so he's rejected the Christ in favor of some other, some Middle Eastern basically. Well, see, the church is full of folk like that, the horoscope folk. You know, and the, and the tarot card folks, you know? I went to school in Mississippi for a while, uh, transferred down there from Mercer for a semester. And down in New Orleans and the Mississippi Delta and all in the area, that's real big in the church. You know, group working and, and chicken bones and all that old stuff, man, it's like, whoa, blew my mind. I had to go on back. Y'all messing with my Jesus, I got to come, I can't blame y'all, I got to go outside, talk, talk to y'all later.
You have, you have to kill the hoochie down there too.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. And I know that it's here, it is here in our area too, but that's one of the things, that's one of the things Peter's trying to warn them to be very careful. See, I listen to how people talk about Jesus or don't talk about Jesus. And that helps me to understand how to think about what I'm hearing. Cause if I go into a service and Jesus is not the center of the service, I know I'm not in the right place. Cause there's no God talk without going through Jesus. Huh? I, I can tell you right now, I know what God wants, what God thinks, what God feels, what he, how he God, I, I can tell you all that. No, you can't, now that's God. Yes, I can. Why? Because he revealed himself completely in Jesus Christ. And all that we need to know about God is in Christ, that's what the New Testament is teaching us, okay? These guys were, they were, they were going, where? So the suggestion is, if you notice, if you look in, uh, verse four, he says, uh, um, where is the promise of his coming? In other words, where is it? You promised. You said he promised, well, where is that promise of his coming? He says, what they do is they scoff and then they indulge in their own lust. In other words, they become very braggadocious, you know, really focused on themselves, mm-hmm. What they knew and how they felt about it, and, and the way they live is, is if there's no regard for. See, now, as Christians, Peter's writing this, our whole life, now, y'all can catch this, this is important. Our whole life is based on the fact that Jesus is coming back. Anybody ask you, why, why you living like that? Jesus is coming back. And when he returns, Paul says, I wanna be found in him. Peter says, when he returns, I want to be as he is. You see, that's the goal, that's the New Testament. We live the way we live because Jesus is coming back. We don't live the way we live cause we wanna go to heaven. We don't wanna go to hell, you gonna miss something doing that. Cause if Jesus don't know you, when he get back, you going to hell, you ain't gotta worry about hell. And you ain't got to worry about heaven. If, if, if he sees himself in you and he knows you, then you done, you, you got it. So your focus on not be going, going or not going, your focus ought to be on being ready when he comes. Preach, Steven, I'm doing the best I can up in here. So first of all, we must understand that the la- in the last days, we gonna see that. I get real frustrated with church folk. Ah, I tell you, the true folk ain't got no respect for Jesus, the Church of God, and nothing else. Lord, him and this wood is just going, you know, I ain't, and you know, it's like, do you know? That's supposed to happen? That, that, that's not the problem. They identify themselves. They're, they're scoffing and they're into their own passions and indulging in their own lust. That's what they do. That's how you know that they're between you and them. You don't get to judge them, you get to look at yourself, make sure you ain't with them. Ain't got no help, Doc. I tried to get it out there, Doc. Woo, I hope they hear me. Okay? So that the idea of challenging Jesus. And his promises is what's laid in the text. Where is, where is the promise? Where, where is the promise? How about, how about, um, uh, all the promises of God that is in Christ Jesus is offered to us? If we read scripture, we'll discover those promises, and there are a lot of people don't believe. They don't believe in the promises of the Lord and Christ, they don't believe, don't believe in. They got prophet, uh, uh, Jenny Mae Jones over there talking about, you gonna, you know, you gonna get married in three years, and you gonna come into a great big wealth. You, you gonna, you gonna be living good, the Lord's gonna bless you real good. That's not prophecy. Prophecy is about Jesus Christ, y'all. Prophecy is, is about those matters regarding the Christ of God. He is the prophet, he is prophecy. Prophecy is not about all that stuff, that's divination, and that is, that's why Paul shut that woman down in, in, in Philippi. You remember that woman, as she saw Paul, oh, there they go, the, the ones, and Paul turned around and shut her down. Course he got him locked up in jail pretty good. I guess one, one turn deserves another, huh? That's what my grandmama would say. But Paul was all right, cause at midnight, they prayed. And everything worked out, probably the door swung open, and Paul said, we ain't gonna leave. Don't do yourself no harm, ain't nobody going nowhere. So I mean, he had, he had it worked out, but that was the issue. Uh, she was, she was, she was making money off, off of divination. And they were perceiving it as prophecy. When we talk about the gift of prophecy, we're not talking about, you can see, honey, the Lord showed me this, and he told me to take, that's a liar. God ain't did that. Prophecy, the gift of prophecy is about those people who can untangle the mysteries of scripture. Prophecy of scripture, that's what, that's what Paul is talking about. Prophecy, he not talking about that, 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 that black magic, ain't nobody talking about that. They down at the church and she's a prophetess? I never would forget when Juanita bottom came big on the strong, she was just a prophetess. She would just prophesy all over the country while her husband was having an affair with her secretary. Now, how come you can prophesy what going on in my life, but you can't see what going on in your, your old, your old, I don't understand. I ain't got no help. While you prophesy, your business all over in the magazines and all there with it, writing all about you. False teachers. When you start hearing people making up names, I'm the Apostle so-and-so. I'm, I'm, I'm prophetess so-and-so, you need to, you need to do that right there, I'll say, who now? How long you been doing it? Get some history, try to get some profile material. How long have you been prophesying? Mm-hmm, so, so what you see when you prophesy? Go ask questions, and you'll see, see how they talk. Jesus' name ain't come out no way, it, it, it'll come out no way in that prophecy, that's how they do it. So first of all, that's why he says, remember the commandments of the prophets, I mean, the, the, the words spoken by the prophets. And the commandments spoken by Jesus, our Savior. Remember that, cause that, that's what's gonna ring true in your ear. So that's the first, so he said, now, here's the first thing, understand, these people gonna come and they gonna act like that. Okay? Forever since our ancestors died, all, all things continue as they were from the beginning of creation. In other words, this been going on for so long. This is not new. Can you hear that? And he already set that understanding straight in the beginning of chapter two, when he says, uh, 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 during, during the prophetic age. You know, that were false prophets. And just like it was false prophets then, they are false teachers now, okay? So there's never been a time when the people of God, the community of God was assembled, and there wasn't somebody in that place scoffing. And creating the problems that causes the church to be challenged by, things, warning them. He wants them to be very comfortable and very clear and see for themselves. Like Clarence would tell them, read it for yourself. You know, pay attention, I mean, when, when you stand up, when you hear somebody stand up. And as soon as I hear them say, our text for the day comes out of Jeremiah so-and-so, well, I've lost interest right there. Cause Jeremiah don't know anything about repentance. So what I'm about to hear now is your thoughts and, and your understanding, how, how you gonna, how you gonna work with that? Cause if I wanna hear redemptive repentance, if I wanna hear how, how to be united with the Father, then I need to listen to Jesus. Now, how can I listen to Jesus? He gave it to the apostles. So you would do well to preach what the apostles have been taught, so that you can understand, because Jeremiah was fulfilled in Jesus. So let's talk Jesus now. That kind of thing, and that's very hard to get preachers to pay attention to. Okay, um. He says that they deliberately, they meaning that's.
He said Jeremiah was fulfilled in Jesus.
Jeremiah was fulfilled in Jesus. Jesus fulfilled all of the prophets and the law.
Right.
Okay, so our focus should be on the fulfillment of the Jeremiah, of the Jeremiah's, uh, 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 prophecy. We should be focusing on what Jesus is saying. Instead, we wanna continue to talk what Jeremiah says. Jeremiah gives us four ways that we can see Jesus. No, that ain't, that ain't what Jeremiah did. But three ways we can get to heaven, Jeremiah don't know nothing about no heaven. Jeremiah did what the Lord told Jeremiah to do, and that the Lord told Jeremiah to do, that was Jeremiah, that was it for Jeremiah. Jeremiah waiting on Jesus himself. They can't crown until, until Jesus get there with, with the, with the, with the, with the, with the redeemed of the Lord. Moses, all of them, none of them have seen, none of them have completed that prophetic career. They're now waiting on the, you better read the Revelation, they waiting on Jesus to get there. And hoping, so great a cloud of witnesses, the Hebrew writer says, and hoping that we are obedient to the Christ like they were to the voice of God. And then when the redeemed of the Lord gets there, when Jesus would get there now, he shall be crowned. You can't crown until we get there, you waiting. You rested, been resting since you disappeared, Moses, when you went up to, you know, you showed out there, that day, you had to go walking. Up the mountain, we ain't seen him since.
I, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, when you were saying, when anybody that preached in the Old Testament. Uh, when you were saying, when anybody that preach in the Old Testament is not preaching Jesus.
Right. But their preaching is Old Testament prophecy, they're preaching what God said to them. To them as a prophet, yeah, uh-huh, to the prophet, right? When you're in the New Testament, you are preaching what God said to Jesus and what he said to his apostles. That's why he says, always remember what the prophets, the holy prophets have said and the commandments of Jesus our Savior said through the apostles. That's the New Testament. Now you gotta be careful with it, oh Lord, he ain't preaching that in the New Testament, I'm gonna have to go, you get, use some sense. Okay, don't tab nobody's church. Just listen. And make a decision and stop running up into stuff, that ain't, that ain't, that ain't, that ain't what you, what you know you need for your salvation. Cause Jeremiah can't save you, I don't care what nobody's saying, them old, the Old Testament prophets cannot offer you salvation. They all talked and focused on the coming of the Christ. He is the one. So if you're preaching from Jeremiah, you better find your way to Jesus real quick. And I don't mean close at the end, and then, ah, Jesus, you done preached forty-five minutes of Jeremiah and then go march Jesus up God gone for heal. Sometime back and sometime falling, you haven't taught us nothing about Jesus, we know he died. We know that, we know God raised him from the dead, we know that, that's what has saved our souls. But how do we live so that we're ready to, we can have eternal life? Who's gonna tell us that, it ain't Jeremiah. There in lies the logistics. Now, I'm, don't, don't hear me say that the Old Testament is not important, listen what he says, always remember the words of the Holy Prophet. And see, Jesus fulfills that word. Remember what, what Paul wrote to them, he said, if you, if you loving the way that Jesus love, you have met the just requirement of the law. Saying the same thing. Excuse me, what Moses gave Israel in the Ten Commandments was fulfilled in Jesus Christ, and then he gave us new law. That we would love the way he loved us. He showed us how to do the Ten Commandments, now just, just do, made it simple for us, just do what I do. That's important. They deliberately ignore the fact that by the word of God, heavens existed long ago and earth was formed out of water and by means of water through which the world at that time developed, uh, was deluged with water and perished. I'll, I'll speak on that quickly and we'll get, we'll start right there next week, okay? He's looking at, uh, the, the sep- the separation, in creation, God separated the firmaments, the heavens and then he gave us the bow, the waters of the earth. Okay? And he's saying, they deliberately ignore, uh, that God existed and that he did that, okay? That he moved, now this is, these are scoffers, okay? And he did it by his word. He said his word and he spoke it and it happened. God did not scoop out the earth, he spoke the word and, and the world, and, 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 and it occurred, let there be light and thou was light, okay? Okay, he, he's, let there be firmament and it happened by his word. He's saying also, by his word, he flooded the earth, remember when, in, in Noah's day? He saved eight people and he spoke the words and flooded. The rains from the heavens and the bowels of the earth opened up and there was the great flood, the deluged, the great flood, all of which by mouth. He also says that the next time of purging, it would be the word and fire. Now his point is, it was the word of God that they're ignoring and the activity that accompanied his word. He said it and it happened, they're ignoring that. And the point is, he said it in Jesus and they're ignoring it, don't it, they ignore it, don't you? That's what he's saying, the scoffers, the false teachers, they forget that it was by the word of God. And now the word of God has come to us through the apostles. Don't you forget, cause that's what they forgotten, that this is what God has said. Does that make sense? We'll get into it more, but that's, that's where verse five is leading us into a deeper conversation, uh, about their deliberate, how they deliberately, the scoffers, the false teachers, how they deliberately ignore the fundamental, the fundamental realities of God and then try to act as if they know him so well. If God's word spoken caused the, the heavens to be created and the, and the bowels of the earth to carry water, then God's word can can do his, his promise in Christ Jesus is all sourced in his word. Okay, I hope I haven't been too confusing or too preaching for you guys on that, we'll come back and, and look at, and come through it again, so don't worry about it. We'll, we'll, we'll do more work there, uh, we'll, we'll try to do better next time. Thanks, good, y'all. Y'all hear me? God bless your hearts, I love y'all, okay, I love y'all. We'll, we'll, um, we'll go ahead and sign off and y'all just remember now, I need your prayers and you need my prayers, we need each other just like that, so let's make sure that we don't forget how to do that. Y'all pray for me and I pray for you, okay? God bless your hearts, we'll see you next time.
Well, it seems our time in the Zoom room has come and gone. We look forward to seeing you again on next Wednesday at two PM here in Betty's Zoom room. Would you consider subscribing to our YouTube channel? And if you do, be sure and ring the bell, so that the notifications can go out every time we open the book. God bless your hearts and we'll see you when we see you.